We need the Tacoma Park City Council to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Mehl.
Here.
Councilmember Kreshi.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Sholles.
Here.
Terrific. This evening, for the agenda, we're going to move the presentation of the proclamation recognizing the 95th anniversary of Boy Scout Troop 33 up for our first agenda item. And then this evening is the last meeting of our city council of this year. We will meet again in January. Our meetings are moving from Monday nights to Wednesday night. So our first meeting of 2016 will be on Wednesday, January 13th. And so I think with that, I'll start with the proclamation for the Boy Scouts. Do you folks want to come up and receive the proclamation?
Ninety-five years old.
All right. Yeah, you can go this way. All right. Well, Rick. Am I on? Okay. Okay. All right, are we ready? All right. Recognizing the 95th anniversary of Boy Scout Troop 33 in Tacoma Park, whereas Tacoma Park Boy Scout Troop 33 was established in 1920 in partnership with the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church and has been a solid part of the community ever since, and whereas Troop 33 is one of the oldest continuously running troops in Maryland, and whereas the troop has a proud history of service to the community and the nation, and whereas in World War II, eight former troop members were killed in action, the troop's flag has eight stars on it to signify these members lost in war, and whereas since 1920, thousands of scouts have participated in the troop, and more than 146 of the troop's members have earned scouting's highest achievement, the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas Troop 33 has had a far-reaching positive impact on our community by providing youth with a safe and exciting environment in which to learn the value of citizenship, service, teamwork, fitness, and leadership. Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the city council, staff, and residents, do hereby join the Boy Scouts of Troop 33 and their families, leaders, and volunteers in celebrating the troop's 95th anniversary dated this 14th day of December 2015. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Oh, there he is. Sure showed up.
Okay, so now we're going to take a short break. Because we need to take the council photo. I promise you, this will only take a few minutes, and then we'll have public comments We have a consent agenda, which is our voting item this evening, that has our resolution setting forth the dates of our holiday recess, as well as the appointment to a number of committees. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding our voting item this evening? Then we will move on to general public comments. If you'd like to speak this evening, please come to the podium, state your name, and where you live. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Pierceall, and I'm on 8 Tacoma Avenue. And I'm here with my neighbor Julie Schmidt, who will also address you on Montgomery College. We, I went to a Montgomery College meeting Thursday, December 10th, and we were shown a slideshow, which was narrated, which was discussing their vision for 2016 to 2026 on our campus. Unfortunately, there were no, absolutely no handouts, nothing, nothing written, no numbers that we could critique. There were figures that we would like to get. They are asking the board's permission, they're meeting with their board, and asking permission if they can give us this material. We don't know whether they will or not. In addition, there is a chapter that they are writing about our campus, which will have more detail in it, that we need to have a draft of. And we do have a 2002 agreement, you know, the college is supposed to be consulting with us. But what we heard on the 10th was that we weren't, they weren't releasing that until the 25th, after the board approves it. And so I don't think that's really consulting, and we should reach out and get that, get that draft document sooner, soon as we can. I mean, time is of the essence here. After that, it goes February 1st to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for a vote. I mean, for, I'm sorry, the board votes on it on the 25th, and then it goes on, of January, and on February 2nd, it goes to the Maryland Higher Education Commission, where it starts a process, which is a very important process to us. What I saw were substantial changes to the campus. One of them is demolishing Falcon Hall, and, which is on Tacoma Avenue, and that is their athletic center, the pool is going, and they're going, their new science building is going to encompass this space. And so it's a very large building, and I'm seeing a lot of density, a lot more density to the campus, which is concerning. We need figures, we need to study it. They are saying that their buildings are going to be the size of the Nunley Building, which is pretty big, even though they say it's three stories, but it's, it's close to a 50-foot building, so we need to look at that. They're defining opportunity sites, Burlington Avenue still, that they're not building on yet, they're, the, the two storage buildings, and now they defined a property on Jessup Blair, Jessup Blair Park, which was new, a location. The daycare center was another very important item, they are closing it. And that, my neighbor is here to speak to that. We need to be sure that the zoning does not change, that is protected under our 2002 agreement, it's in the historic district, but we want to reach out to the county and make sure that they do not try to change the underlying zoning, it should remain residential. And I ask that you bring them here as early as possible in January, so that they can talk to us meaningfully about their project.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, my name's Julie Schmidt, I live at 7710 Tacoma Avenue. And as Lorraine said, I'm here to address the council specifically on the question of the daycare center, although I have concerns about all of this as well. The concern I have is that, my understanding is that that property is part of the 2002 agreement with the city. It is supposed to remain residential, it is part of the historic district. I'm troubled by what I've heard from Lorraine about what, what happened at the meeting, that there was sort of this, that, that the college seemed not willing to really engage in consultation, or to answer questions raised by a community member about what was going to happen with this property, or with other expansion. I'm, you know, I agree with Lorraine that this, you know, I'm hoping that the college will come and meet with this board, but I do think that probably it would be in everyone's best interest if, if there was a way of reaching out to them prior to January. This seems like it's moving very quickly, and that they're trying to make this a fait accompli before they have to engage the city or the community on this issue. So I'm hoping there's a way to send a letter, or to somehow reach out and request information, because it does appear they are withholding information from community members. This meeting wasn't even advertised. As somebody whose property abuts the college, I was not aware of the meeting until after the fact, and I do have a relationship with the college, I do, you know, talk to people there, I, you know, know the groundskeeper, I've talked to the provost before, and I, there was no, nobody was made aware of this. It's almost as if they didn't want community input at this meeting. So, thank you. I'm just hoping there's a way that this body can reach out before, before January. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add with the daycare center, that at the meeting, they basically said that it, we got the impression it wasn't really imminent, that they were closing the daycare. On the other hand, I'm hearing from community members that they are learning through their sources, possibly at the daycare, that March, it'll be closed in March. So we need some clarification on that. And when I asked the provost to work with us on the disposition of that property, he said, "We will inform you of our decision." So that's what I'm talking about. I saw an unwillingness to work with us, and so please reach out to them on that. And I agree with Julie, actually, they advertised a tiny bit, but not much. I mean, they really didn't do a flyer or anything on this meeting, it was a pretty important meeting. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Sally Kern, and I live at 7114 Woodland Avenue. I wanted to thank the county officials for coming tonight. I wanted to talk about the, the school issue. I've had kids, and two boys in public school, the homeschools, for 12 years, and it seems to me that overcrowding is getting worse, with no plans to address it, just plans to study it. As we know, Tacoma Park is having a building boom, will be getting more and more students, and we have a very high farms rate, ratio in our homeschools. Meanwhile, we see buildings, new schools, and renovations in other parts of the county. Right now, I hear that the starting class size for kindergarten at Tacoma Park Elementary is 25 students, when my kids attended, they're now a sophomore and junior, I mean, an eighth grader at Tacoma Middle, and a, and a junior at Blair, and they had 15 or 16 students in their kindergarten class. All the chatter on the Blair listserv is about how we can have a graduation where students can have a few members of their family attend. Graduating high schools, one of the highest achievements for many of these kids will, will achieve, and they can't even get their whole family members, they practically scalp tickets at this point. The PTSA is talking, was worried that we might have to do fundraising just to pay for an, having a, a big enough graduation site. I appreciate the classroom additions planned for Tacoma Park Middle School, but I think that our elementary and high school students deserve better. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine Kirsch, and I live at 7111 Woodland Ave in Tacoma Park. And I, like Sally, thank the county officials for coming, and you all for your hard work. Also here to talk about the school's overcrowding issue, and I wasn't prepared to talk about it, but cared about the issue, and then when I saw that we could use a few more speakers, I saw it, forgive me. But I am a parent of two kids at Tacoma Middle School, one who'll be going to Blair next year, but my kids were at Rolling Terrace Elementary for the last seven years, on and off, between the two of them. Very overcrowded school, I think you probably know, it's maybe 150 to 200 kids over capacity. You all know the numbers already, but the anecdotal stories that I would hear that left an impression with me about how it feels to be a student in an overcrowded school were around the recess issue. And it is a big deal in fifth grade, when you only have 25 minutes, as it turns out, or even 20 sometimes, coming and going, to just play, and my soccer-loving son wants to play soccer every day out there, and they really had to fight for the space between the students. There were 130, something like 130 fifth graders, and we had halfway through our time at Rolling Terrace, we'd gotten four portables, which drastically dug into the space that Rolling Terrace already has, which is a pretty small space. It got to the point where kids were fighting over who could play soccer, and somebody had to play on the blacktop, one group of, like, 30 kids had to play on the black group, blacktop, and the other group got the field. And it really, sadly, and this is totally anecdotal, but it started to even break down a little bit along race lines of who was playing with whom, which did not happen, and I kind of, to me, this was a good example, we talk about how wars are fought around resources, you know, and access to land and water, and I know this is taking it astray, but I do think that was what was happening. They did not have enough space for everybody to play happily together, nor did they have enough soccer balls, but that was a different issue. And then when we were leaving Rolling Terrace, we heard that there were going to be four more portables. I cannot imagine what recess looks like at Rolling Terrace now, with 135 big, growing kids trying to play. So I think it's a big issue, I hope that we can do something about it as a community to add on to these wonderful schools that we have. People move here in part because we have such wonderful schools, but we need to grow the schools and the school capacity. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? We'll move on to, oh, for the record, we had, this week, the staff had their holiday luncheon, and I was able to attend and present a proclamation to recognize our housing manager, Linda Walker, who is retiring after 27 years in service here in Tacoma Park. I won't read the whole proclamation, but I'll note that Linda was involved in the implementation of Tacoma Park's rent stabilization program, the development of procedures for monitoring rents charged to tenants, the development of the emergency assistant fund, and providing low-income residents with access to needed medical care, food, and housing. And so I just wanted to let folks know, we had a very nice event, and going away for Linda, and wanted to recognize her. All right, now, we'll move on to council comments. Any council comments for this evening? Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. And this is a, as you said, a busy time of year. I just wanted to make note that I've attended several different functions in the last week, went to the Maryland Municipal League Legislative Dinner with my colleagues on the council, and many of the state delegates and senators from this area, also county council members were there. Went to the Historic Tacoma Holiday Party yesterday, which I congratulate Lorraine Pierceall, who's there with us tonight, and Diana Cohn, and the other members of the Historic Tacoma that organized that. It was a nice party, but also had a nice presentation by Frances Spitz on the house on Holly Avenue that they just, she and her husband just renovated. Had a chance to go to the Christmas party at the Essex House Apartments yesterday, and I would like to thank Councilmember Smith for the invitation. The Essex Apartments is in his ward, and it was a fantastic function, a lot of people and a lot of fun. Also went to the Council of Government's Ward banquet last week, and a Council of Government's function today, it was a special briefing on vigilance, really talking about the various terrorist activities that have plagued the world recently, and talked about, there was a presentation by the FBI and Department of Homeland Security, plus local police, on what municipalities should be thinking about to prepare and to discourage such events in our area. So I would like to think that we could schedule a briefing from our police department where we could have a chance to talk about that. And I'll send a request and an email later on that. And then lastly, I would just like to pass on a message from the, our official piece delegate, Pat Lovelace, who is, for many years, been a member of this audience every Monday night for our council meetings. He's had difficulty getting here in recent months because of his health and the lack of transportation down here, but he did want me to relay his holiday wishes and, and let you know that he, he wants peace, peace, peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. First question is for the city manager. Did you get any information from Mike O'Reilly regarding the playground at Liko Creek?
I don't have that information, yes.
Okay, thank you. And I would also like to join Councilmember Siemens, and thank the residents at Essex House for putting on a fantastic seniors' dinner. There were a lot of people that came out and participated, and everyone said that they had a great time, and that's the type of capacity building that should be going on here in Tacoma Park in the apartment buildings. Thank you.
Councilmember Mehl?
Thank you. I wanted to ask the city manager about follow-up with regard to the building on Cobey Avenue.
I know there were a number of emails this afternoon, I have not read them, so I'll find out that information and get it to you.
So as far as you know, construction is still ongoing on the site?
I don't have the information.
Okay, thank you. And the second question for the city manager was whether either tonight or at some later date, you can provide an update on the progress with regard to Tacoma Junction?
Yes.
So one thing that would be helpful to check with is just to check with S H A on the timing of signalization modernization, the sidewalk and the street are painted with lots of markings suggesting something will happen soon, but just getting some specifics on that would be useful, in particular because I'm assuming there will be traffic impacts in that, in that location, but then also...
Yeah, I have some information on that for tonight.
Okay, great. And then also with regard to the actual progress with the developer, I was sort of expecting by this point, we would be in progress of community charrettes or some other level of engagement, and so I'm just feeling like things have slipped a bit. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. First, I just wanted to mention for Ward 1, residents in particular, particularly in the Penn area, there have been some break-ins recently. One neighbor of mine about three doors away, was actually broken into once, and attempted a second time all within the month. So we've arranged for the police, and Jason, the deputy city manager, is helping with this also. Tomorrow night at 7:30 in the azalea room here in the municipal building at 7:30, and any of the Ward 1 people are more than welcome. I hope we get a good turnout. Secondly, I just want to follow up on Lorraine Stewart and Julie Schmidt's comments. The concern about the Montgomery College situation is that it is a 10-year master plan that they're working on, and for reasons I'm not entirely sure of, the process has really been telescoped into a very short amount of time, and what I think would normally be expected to be a reasonable amount of time for comment and consultation and review seems to have, because the timing has been telescoped, and that may be due to the new state administration shortening the end deadline, but that has led to less opportunity, I think, for us to really understand what it is they're talking about, and obviously has an impact in their neighborhood. So I do think it would be a good idea for us to make a formal request, that they provide us with the data and the, and the schematics and the other material sooner rather than later, because otherwise we're potentially looking at a situation where we would only see that for the first time, right around the time it's approved. And I know it's a 10-year plan, so it doesn't all happen immediately thereafter, but we might only see that about the time it's approved in February. So I'd like to, following up on what the, the two North Tacoma folks mentioned, have us formally request, if we can, the plans as soon as that's possible, and also to ask that the provost, or whoever from his team, come and do a presentation, maybe toward the end of January, but before the final action by the board. And then the last thing, I just want to mention, people all know Pat Rumbaugh, the Play Lady, and I think a lot of us have been at her, at her events. I think she circulated to everybody on the council, this recent article she wrote, that was actually picked up in a blog by a woman named Darcia Narvez, who's a PhD writer for Psychology Today, so her article is now in the Psychology Today, at least online version. So if you got that article, I'll resend it around, folks in the city might just want to see, feel free to circulate it. I'm going to put it out on our, the Ward 1 listserv, so, thank you.
Thank you. So I think I've been just shadowing Councilmember Siemens for the last few days, we've been at a lot of the same events. Some of the other ones, I attended the Tacoma Academy on Friday evening, had a lovely holiday choral event that I was able to attend, and then on Saturday, we had a couple of new businesses moving and opening. The Long and Foster opened their business on Pine, and Still Point moved from Pine and now has a location on Grant Avenue, and Bikram Yoga in the Junction is now under new management. So thank you to Laura Barclay and the Old Town Business Association. We had very nice ribbon-cutting ceremonies this Saturday. And I think, just following up on what Councilmember Kovar said, I know we're going into a bit of a recess, but if staff could follow up on the Montgomery College, and then just let us know if while we're in recess, if a letter would be appropriate, or what's the appropriate thing to do to follow up with that? Thank you. Does the city manager have any comments?
Yes. First, just a reminder that besides the council being on recess, we do have some times when our buildings are closed over the holidays. Our city offices and facilities will close 12:30 PM on Christmas Eve, and then stay closed through the weekend, and then the following week, they will close at 6:00 PM on New Year's Eve through Saturday, January 2nd. I also, just also on a scheduling note, this is the final week for leaf collection, so please urge your constituents to get the leaves out to the curb. There are several streets that have scheduled leaf collection along state highways, so those are Carroll, Ethan Allen, and Piney Branch Road have their final leaf collection on Monday, the 21st. Did follow up on, and got an answer for Councilmember Siemens regarding MCPS staff blowing leaves onto Grant Avenue, as well as early trash pickup at Maple Avenue Market. Staff has contacted both entities and reported the, the problems. The most, I think, important issue to let people know about is that the Maryland Healthcare Commission does meet this Thursday. This is, they have a meeting at 1:00 PM in Baltimore in their offices. There'll be a presentation from the city and at least one hospital, perhaps two other hospitals, on the certificate of need application for Washington Venice Hospital. A decision on their application is likely on Thursday. And so we'll be sharing some information on, from legal counsel about that later this evening, but it's a fairly significant... The second item I wanted to mention on general items of interest, does have to do with Tacoma Junction development. And discussions have been ongoing between the city's development attorneys and NDC. We had thought they'd be completed this week, it looks like it may still be shortly, but it's not done yet. Once that, those information, that discussion is done, it will come back to the council. that, those information, that discussion is done, it will come back to the council, and we will start publicizing kind of the process for community charrettes and how that process goes forward, but we're not in a position to be able to share that information yet. Those negotiations are ongoing. We are going to be, over the recess, keeping the information up to date as best we can on our website. One of the things also, Councilmember Mael mentioned, seeing some markings on the pavements. Pepco's going through doing upgrades to pedestrian crossing signals at all of the signalized intersections in the city. The Public Works Director anticipates some traffic issues with that work, as well as moving the power lines on, from the Carroll Avenue Bridge project. I don't know if that's all that's involved, and so it's something I'll find out. The other things I want to mention is that we're celebrating the library's 80th birthday this week, so on Wednesday at 7:00 PM, you can come to the library and have cake and lemonade. We don't know that that's the actual 80th date, but it is the 80th year. Immediately after getting some cake and lemonade, people are urged to come and listen and participate in reviewing the plans that have been proposed for the Tacoma Park Library renovation, and we very much are interested in what the public comments are on these, so that we can bring that back to the council. The police community relations request for proposal is going to be reissued with some modifications. We did receive some comments from the city attorney's office on how to do that, and that will be done soon. And then except for this Thursday's meeting at the Maryland Healthcare Commission, I'm going to take some days off, so I'll be off Tuesday through Tuesday, and then I'll be back. And our deputy city manager will be in charge during those days. I'll follow up on the other items that were raised to get that information back to you.
Councilmember Mael, do you have a question?
Yeah. Is the agreement or discussion with NDC, is that going to produce a finalized document?
Yes.
And will that document be reviewed by council before it's finalized, or will be finalized?
Yeah, it's not finalized between now.
Okay. And I just wanted to remind the city manager that, and my colleagues, that I would really prefer it if we, if there's a section in that agreement which is relevant to the co-op, that we find a way to share that content, either specifically that content or the general outline of that content with co-op before a finalization.
Okay, yeah, I don't know if there's been any discussions on that, but I'll find out.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
With regard to the Maryland Healthcare Commission meeting this Thursday, you are suggesting that we might want to consider attending-
Yes.
-that meeting. Could you elaborate a little bit about, as to the basis for your advice on that?
Certainly. I think that a decision to remove an acute care hospital from a community is a significant decision. I don't know that that's ever happened in Maryland's history, and I think that recognizing that city officials are concerned about the impact on healthcare in Tacoma Park, as well as the leaving of our major employer, is a significant step that needs to be dealt with cautiously.
... $1.72 billion dollars for facilities, though it's a substantial investment in keeping up the growth revitalizing older facilities and maintaining our school's condition. I'm going to start off with our forecast and everybody-
I know, as living in Montgomery County, we've just been growing a tremendous amount for many years. Since 2007, we've had a particularly strong surge of enrollment growth. In an eight-year period, we've grown by 18,702 students, and we're at 156,447 students this year. And if you go back even further, we have been increasing by about 2,000 per year for 30 years. Back in the mid-1980s, when we kind of aged out the baby boom generation and we had kind of gone down, since then, since 1983, we've grown by 65,000 students. So it's really been a 30-year transformation of the school system, growth in all areas of the county, and growth in areas like Tacoma Park where there's not a lot of new development, but there's changing demographics that are causing enrollment growth. And so the next six years, which is our CIP year period, we're estimating about 10,000 more students will enter the school system. Now, if you look at it by annual increases, you can see just how big these have been, 2,500-plus in the last three years, and just a huge amount. And most of this in this period of eight years has been at the elementary school level, and that's, you can see that has occurred because of the birth trends that we've seen. From 2000 to about 2007, we were climbing in birth, resident births in the county, pretty markedly, and as those students entered the system, that pushed up enrollment. Of course, five years later, these births become kindergarten students and have been moving through the system. But it looks like we peaked in 2007, at least for the time being, and since then, we've trended down somewhat, and that's going to give us a little bit of a respite at the elementary level. This decline has been associated with the Great Recession, and it's been called the Baby Recession, and it's something that happened nationally as well statewide and locally. It's just a reluctance of families to have children, to form households during economic uncertainties, but you can see in 2014, it looks like we've kind of moved through that period, and now we're having higher births. So for a period of time, we're going to see a little bit of a plateauing at the elementary level. The part, the top graph here, the blue line, is enrollment in grades K to 5, and you can see, like I said, from 2007 to 15, about 13,000 of that 18,700 growth was at elementary schools, so the vast majority has been at that level. We're about at 71,500 now, and we're just about at a peak because of those births coming down, and that's why the projection shows pretty much a flat period coming up, about a 313 decline in six years. The only, that's helpful in terms of putting more demands on elementary schools, but it's important to know that we're behind in catching up with all that growth we've already had at the elementary schools. We have 381 relocatable classrooms around the county now, and 85% of those are at elementary schools. So we clearly have a lot of work to do to catch up with the growth that we've already had at elementaries. And then you see, the green line is grade 6 to 8. We've already begun to see the wave of elementary students moving up into the middle grades. We've grown by 3,400 there, and we expect another 3,500 middle school students. And at the high school level, the wave is, of course, coming a little bit further out as those kids get older and reach high school age. 1,200 more in the last eight years, but we've got 6,900 more high school students in the next six years coming. And those secondary enrollment growth, middle and high, are just tremendous. If you think about, our high schools are 2,200 or 2,400, that's like three high schools' worth of enrollment growth, and it's like three middle schools' worth of enrollment growth, you know, spread around the county, but still a huge impact on facilities, where we're already behind at the elementary level, and we've got this compounding problem now trying to keep up with all the secondary growth. A little bit about student diversity, that's been the driver of all this growth. All of these, this enrollment growth, that 65,000 increase since the mid-'80s has been in non-white groups. White enrollment has actually declined over that period. All the growth has been in Hispanic, African-American, Asian, and now we have the two or more race category. We're reaching a point where Hispanic share of total enrollment is about to cross lines with the white, non-Hispanic. We have no majority group anymore. The last time we were over 50% in any race/ethnic group was back in 2000, when we were just slightly over 50% white, but that's been trending down, as I said. And we already, at the elementary schools, system-wide, have more Hispanic students than white, non-Hispanic. So we are becoming a more Hispanic school district. Those demographics also correlate with a big increase in our socioeconomic diversity and poverty in the county. This is the picture for free and reduced meals. This has been growing even faster than our enrollment growth, which has been fast enough, but you see there's about a 50% increase here, over a 50% increase in the students qualifying from free and reduced meals, and we were at 54,500 students this fall, and 83% of these get the free portion of the meeting program, meaning they're at such a poverty level that they qualify for free meals. The other 17% get the reduced price, and this percent of free has been going up year after year after year, just as the total number's gone up. And the correlation between free and reduced meals and Hispanic and African enrollment is very strong. If you looked at all the farms enrollment, that 54,000 students, over half of those students are Hispanic, and a third of those students are African-American. Really very few percentage-wise are Asian and white, so it's a very disproportionate distribution between those two groups. And of course, those are the two groups that we have the big challenge of the achievement gap between African-American Hispanic students and white and Asian students, and it's highly correlated with this poverty in those groups. So that's a quick tour of the demographics. So the CIP, as I said, totals 1.73 billion over a six-year period, and as I said at the beginning, we've got three main challenges. We need to add a lot of capacity. We're still behind at the elementary level for the growth that's already occurred, and we need to face the future with so many more middle school and high school kids. The second thing we need to do is we need to continue our revitalization expansion program whereby we upgrade aging schools to become modern facilities, and in almost every case, we're adding additional capacity there too as we revitalize those schools. That's a big part of our CIP. And the third part that's very critical is the maintenance of our facilities, HVAC, roof replacements, the kind of things that just have to be done to keep our schools in operational shape. Roughly, one-third of the budget goes to each of these in the capital budget, 33% roughly to each area. So the first thing I'll point out is addition projects, and I've highlighted and read the ones that affect students in the city of Tacoma Park. We have a number of projects that were approved already and are moving forward. That's the left-hand column. A lot of times, the CIP is just continuing a lot of projects. It's not completely rewritten, but every year that we face new enrollments, we add new projects. So the new projects added this year are an addition at Tacoma Park Middle School, which will be completed in August 2020. The school currently has 1,055 students with a capacity of 939, and it's projected to go up to over 1,300 students. So we'll be bringing that school up to a capacity of just under 1,500 students. We're finding ourselves having to make our middle schools bigger than they were in the past and our high schools bigger to keep up with the growth. East Silver Spring is also going to have an addition. I'll talk about that in a minute. It's associated with other schools that need relief. East Silver Spring is not over capacity itself greatly, but an addition there will help relieve Rolling Terrace. And then we've got Piney Branch, which is scheduled for a feasibility study next year, and then we plan an addition to open there in August 2021. That school came in higher in enrollment this year, and it's a very tight site. It's our smallest school site in the county, and it's very difficult to add on to there, but we're going to do a feasibility study next year, and hopefully we can add to that school. So this lower area of the Down County Consortium where Tacoma Park is, was studied last year. We did what we call a comprehensive capacity study. Because we face particularly large space deficits at Forest Knowles, let's see if I can point these at the top here. Forest Knowles has been over capacity for some time. It's almost 200 seats over capacity now. The other schools that are over capacity are Woodland. Woodland is about 130 over capacity now and continues to be so, and Rolling Terrace is 150 students over capacity and needs relief there. So, and then Piney Branch is over capacity and projected to grow. So those four schools in particular were studied for additions, as well as all the other schools in this area, because we, we're not confident that we could add on to some of these, and sometimes we have to add on to a school adjacent to another one in order to relieve that one down the road through boundary changes. And that was the conclusion in terms of Forest Knowles. We're not really, it's not really feasible to add an addition there, and the same with Rolling Terrace. And that's because Rolling Terrace already has a capacity of 747. That's about our top end for most of our schools, and Forest Knowles has a capacity of 555, but it has a very difficult site to add on to. So those two schools needed to find some way to be relieved by capacity being built somewhere else. On the other hand, Woodland and Piney Branch are capable of additions, we believe. Woodland's already had a capacity study, so we know we can add on there, so that'll take care of that problem. And Piney Branch, as I said, the feasibility study will be next, done next year, and we'll determine if we can go ahead and build there. And I know there's an issue with the city on the pool there, so we'll talk about that in a minute, I'm sure. But anyway, so the, instead of Forest Knowles getting an addition, the plan is to add to Montgomery Knowles and Pinecrest and reassign students once those projects are done down the road, and the schedule for those additions among, and these are paired schools, so we need to add on to both because it's K2 and 35. Students would be reassigned there when that capacity becomes available in August 2020. In terms of Rolling Terrace, the East Silver Spring addition also would open in August 2020, and we would do a boundary study and reassign students when that capacity is available. So that's the current plan in the CIP. As we presented this to the Board of Education, they did support this in the CIP. This is what we're requesting, but they also asked staff to look at what options might exist for another elementary school down the road. We did look at elementary schools as part of this study, but the superintendent recommended these additions for the time being, and the board supported that, but they felt like we need to have, keep our options open, so we'll be doing some in-house assessment of some former closed schools in this area, and see if the, what the feasibility would be to open another school sometime down the road. So that's, that'll be determined next fall when we go into the next CIP cycle. So in terms of new school projects, there's none that directly affect your area, but we have schools opening up in Clarksburg, a middle, two middle schools, one in Clarksburg, one in Bethesda, and two elementary schools, one in Rockville and one in Germantown, and another new elementary school in Clarksburg. So those are in the CIP. Now, again, there's not many revitalization expansion projects affecting Tacoma Park, no elementary schools, whoops, but I put Wheaton in here because you're part of the Down County Consortium, and Wheaton is one of the five high schools that students in this area can choose to attend. This area's in the base area of Blair, of course, but that is well underway, opening in January 2016, a brand-new Wheaton High School. in January 2016, a brand-new Wheaton High School. Okay? And the Thomas Edison High School a year after that also could affect students in Tacoma Park if they attend that. So overall, there's a lot of capacity being added here, almost 6,000 elementary seats, again, trying to catch up with past growth and, to some extent, new growth in certain parts of the county. There's three new elementary schools, 14 additions, six RevX projects. Middle school capacity, 4,000 seats, two new middle schools, five additions, two RevXs, and high school capacity, almost 2,300. And that will add 1,200 seats for additions and 1,000 for RevXs. Now, the push-up in enrollment from the middles to the high schools is certainly going to affect the Down County Consortium high schools. So this year, we're doing a capacity study for the five Down County Consortium high schools, which is all part of your area. Your students can choose these schools. And in every case, we're going to be seeing what can be added on to these schools. More and more, we're building high schools up to 2,400 capacity. Of course, Blair is already at 2,900, but we're going to look at all these schools and see what the possibility is of increasing their capacity, because all of these schools face space deficits in the next six years. Blair is projected to reach almost 3,400 students, almost 500 over capacity. Einstein is going to be 400 capacity, over capacity in 2021. Kennedy, 230. Northwood, 480 over capacity, and Wheaton, 160. So we have a huge amount of high school capacity to get built in this area, and our first step is to see, can we add on to these schools? And a lot of these do have relatively small buildings right now by today's standards, not Blair, but all the other ones are around 1,600 to 1,800 capacity. So hypothetically, if it's physically possible, we could bring them up to 2,400 and take care of a lot of that growth. And I did mention already that Pony Branch will be studying the coming year for an addition project. And the board asked about the pool and whether that could be maintained. At first, we thought it wouldn't be possible, but the plan is to evaluate options to add on, try to preserve the pool, and options may be developed that can't preserve it because of the limited site and the ability to add on there. But we will be looking at both approaches. In the terms of the maintenance of facilities, there's some increases from previous CIPs, particularly for fire safety upgrades. HVAC is a constant area of concern in school communities, and there's been a very healthy increase made here in the CIP. Same with roof replacements. And a new project is to convert regular grass fields to artificial turf in the high school stadiums around the county. There's 19 that don't have that benefit now, and we're looking at a six-year approach to try to provide those to all high school stadiums. And that's the overview. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Seth Adams, the Division of Construction Director is here as well, if I can't answer something.
Sure. Thank you very much. Since Councilmember Mail has been looking at this issue and asking us to bring you here, I'm going to let him go first.
Okay.
Thank you for coming out tonight, and I just want to sort of make some overall comments, and then I'll try to get into questions. I guess the thing that's hard to see from a Tacoma Park perspective, in a presentation like this that maybe we can follow up on, is thinking about just where students who are residents of Tacoma Park end up. You know, I think the majority of our students are at Blair, are at schools that are based in the city, are at Silver Spring International and Rolling Terrace. You know, that's probably 90% of our population. And so, you know, that's where I've tried to focus the time that I've spent looking at CIPs and looking at county investments. I spent time going all the way back to 2004 CIP budgets to look at the history of investments in those schools that generally serve Tacoma Park students. And the thing that I wish I didn't see was just a real absence of investments in modernization or expansion in those schools. So, you know, to give an example, a resident before brought up Rolling Terrace, and you talked about Rolling Terrace Elementary School. And to compare it, sort of a tale of two cities, to another school cluster that's getting a lot of attention right now over in Bethesda, an Ashburton School. So Ashburton Elementary School is getting money right now, is in the middle of a renovation cycle. The Board of Education just thought it was so important, that school was so important, that they expedited the construction process, I understand from the press release they put out after their meeting. So that's a school that in 2010 was only 16% over capacity, at a time when Rolling Terrace was 40% over capacity. Present, Ashburton is 39% over capacity, and Rolling Terrace is 32% over capacity. And that, you know, continues through the projections in 2018. Rolling Terrace was over capacity for years before that, too. And so that's one example of a school that looks like it's year after year after year serving way too many students, we heard from one member of the public about that, without anything other than planning processes, which, some of which you described tonight, to address. Looking at the entire cluster of schools in this area, and I had to pull this together by trying to piece those schools, our schools, out of the CIPs, again, going back to 2004, you know, looking at all of our schools and your current projections, our schools are projected to be 19% over capacity by 2018. That's the total over capacity of that whole set of schools, including Tacoma Middle. And yet, there's only one improvement in that cluster of schools planned, not a feasibility study or an evaluation plan, but actual construction plan, versus some of the other clusters, which have two, three, four modernizations ongoing. And so I provide that background because it really looks like a pattern of not investing in our schools down here. And I would love to be able to champion, just, you know, full support at the county level and full support at the state level for funding the county's CIP to be a champion of the kinds of investments that you all like to make. But it's really hard when we look at the amount of overcrowding in our schools to be able to do that. And just to go through some other numbers, I mean, even Tacoma Park Elementary, I think, just based on the numbers that I'm seeing in the CIP, which may not, may have been adjusted by all of you, is, you know, 70 or 80 students over capacity. You talked about Pony Branch Elementary getting even more over capacity. I think Pony Branch is going to be 100-plus over capacity by 2018. So whereas elementary schools are flat overall through the county, not expecting growth, we're still, you know, seeing growth down here. The last two, last two comments I want to make are my under, when I looked at the data, I could see that old projections of where overcapacity would be seem to overestimate the amount of future overcapacity in other parts of the county or more residential parts of the county versus our part of the county, which has a lot of apartments. And so if you look back at 2006, or 2008, or 2010, CIPs and their projections, and then you measure what happened in '14 and '15 and so on, it looks like consistently that estimates underestimate our area, or at least maybe more urban and more apartment-focused areas, which affects your, whether a school can qualify for expansions. I understand that the county has asked for an OLA report on the formula or something about how you estimate overcapacity. I talked to the staff or County Councilmember Hucker about that. And so could you just follow up on that?
Yeah, I'm not really up to date on exactly what it's going, the scope is, but I think it's to just look at our strategy for addressing space deficits, what we look at to prioritize CIP projects. And, you know, it's, it may look at the forecast a little bit in accuracy by way of assessing whether the forecast has been a problem in terms of certain areas of the county. I do the forecast, so I can tell you that certainly it's not 100% accurate. It's an uncertain exercise. But it's reviewed every year, and basically, if we catch a trend that's changing, then the forecast goes up. And I think that's one thing that we've seen in the last couple of years, really since the Great Recession hit. The Down County Consortium has seen a tremendous amount of enrollment growth. You mentioned Ashburton, the Walter Johnson Cluster has, you mentioned BCC, they've seen a tremendous amount of growth. And our general strategy, which I think would make sense to most people, is we look at the projection, when we're deciding where to do capacity projects, we look at the projection six years out in the future, and we look at how big a deficit a school has, and then we basically just rank them, with the highest deficit at the top of the list and on down. And then at some point, we have to draw a line below which we know we can't get funding from the county for such a large, ambitious CIP. This year, the superintendent decided we wouldn't ask for additions if a school was less than 125 over capacity. But a lot of schools are way over that, and that's why we have such a huge CIP. So that's how we judge whether we need additions, and if the deficit's large enough, then we put a new school in, if it's warranted by this magnitude of deficits. And we do that every year. We redo it based on the latest forecast. And so two years ago, we began to look at the Down County Consortium because we were seeing so much more growth than we had in the recent past. And this led to this capacity study for the area that I just highlighted. In the last year, we basically looked at all these schools in the lower portion of the DCC. So I guess what I could say, there's a lot of investment coming now. We've already put in additions at East Silver Spring, Montgomery Knowles, Pinecrest, Woodland, and Pony Branch. Those funds are in this requested CIP. And Tacoma Park Middle School. And most of those are opening by August 2020. Only Pony Branch is August 2021. So, and we don't know when we're going to be able to address Blair because we don't know what we're going to do yet. That's the study this year, how to handle this high school bulge. But in terms of the revitalization expansions, the strategy there is we've assessed schools through an objective criteria called the Facilities Assessment Criteria and Testing Methodology, FACT for short, where we go out and measure all these building systems and conditions and score the schools. It shows up in Appendix E in our CIP. And that's been a very tried and true list that the board has been very committed to using that sequence. And sometimes you get a cluster that happens to have a lot of schools that are built around the same time, and they all, they happen to all need RevXing within what seems like a short period, and someone on a different part of the county could say, why are they getting everything now? But that's one thing, actually, the OLO study recently did a study of our FACT process, and they found there wasn't that kind of bias. Churchill had a number of schools that got revitalized and expanded one after the other, but when they looked at the data, those schools scored high in need, and they were all built when that area suburbanized, and so they all kind of came together in terms of the condition that they have. So those are the two big ways that schools get projects. Either they've been assessed and they're in a queue for revitalization expansion, or they've been assessed in terms of the magnitude of the deficit, and we're working our way down the list. And that's why all these schools landed in the CIP this year.
So how does a school like Rolling Terrace, which has been over capacity since 2008, and which has, you know, really significant, at least by the two times I've visited the school, you know, problems interior? I mean, you don't, it does not look like a school has been modernized recently. How does a school like that not end up getting expansions or modernization more quickly?
Well, this year, the school is 150 over, and you compared it to Ashburton. Ashburton is 255 over capacity this year. So it's not that Rolling Terrace doesn't need something, but the reason they moved up the Ashburton addition one year is because of that magnitude of deficit. It's more than 100 greater deficit than Rolling Terrace faces. And if you just compare the amount of deficit of Rolling Terrace, I mean, sure, it absolutely needs something, and it's going to get something now through adjacency with East Silver Spring, but in past years, it just didn't come up to the same level as other schools. It didn't meet the threshold to get in the program.
Just a couple more questions. If I could ask you to follow up, and I don't expect you to have it at your fingertips tonight, but to let us know when the last one of our elementary schools was modernized, so not expanded, but with a modernization project. So between, you know, Tacoma Elementary, Pony Branch, Rolling Terrace?
I can actually do that right now.
Oh, great.
We have everything in the CIP. Well, Tacoma Park Middle School was modernized in 1999. So that's that one.
What about the elementaries?
The East Silver Spring, we've done some additions there, but 1975 was the last time that had any, and that wasn't a modernization. Rolling Terrace, it, 1988, it was opened.
When I get out of high school.
And Blair High School, 1998.
But the other elementary schools, no modernization? Pony Branch and Tacoma?
Pony Branch, nope, nothing yet. Did I miss one?
Tacoma Elementary had some.
Tacoma Elementary, probably, it had a big addition.
But the rest of the building wasn't touched?
Well, I think it might have been touched. The Tacoma Park building, the core would have been improved, yeah. The Tacoma Park Elementary addition, and HVAC upgrades throughout the building. So that was a significant project. So.
Sir, last two questions. One, if for the Pony Branch study, one of the limitations is the property boundary behind the school, and I note that it's got a, you know, playing field, and then essentially a moat, and then the school building. If the problem with regard to expanding the school back is, you know, a boundary issue where the property boundary is too close to get, you know, a classroom with, back there, I hope you all would talk to us. Do we own that property, the parking lot?
Parking planning is the property.
Okay.
But we manage the field, and we certainly could.
Because we could be allies in trying to make sure that there is space available behind the school, if it's a choice between, you know, losing the pool or potentially an investment that actually, in fact, better connects the school to play space.
Right.
That's something we'd really be interested in. And then when you have a school like Blair High School that has, I think you said 500, or it's headed toward 500 over capacity. Are there any additional investments that are made in athletic programs and other, I mean, or is it just, as a resident said, is essentially just more kids competing for the same sort of extracurricular space?
Well, that definitely is a downside of getting large, the extra, well, the way I've heard it from the program, folks, is there's benefits to being big in terms of the academic programs you can offer, the diversity of programs, the foreign languages, the accelerated classes. You know, you've got more critical mass to make those classes possible. The downside is, you know, you have one football team, you have one basketball team, and it gets much more difficult to get on that, the theater program. And some cases you hear around the country, they divide the enrollment so they can do a house of one part and another house. That hasn't been done here yet, but I think it's those sort of activities where kids want to get involved in a particular program or sports activity. I don't think it would inhibit clubs. You can play more types of clubs than you can think of, but it's the more restricted things that only have a few openings.
Okay. Just the last two comments and closing briefly. At an earlier point, I looked at the district-by-district, school-specific spending in past CIPs. I saw a big difference between District Five and District Four versus some of the other districts over a 10-year period in investments. And so I just note that in passing. And then the last comment I'd make is, you heard us earlier discussing the significant likelihood that our hospital would be closing. So there's a big property in the city that has buildings that may not be fully used, in case you're interested.
Good to know.
Thank you. Anyone else have any? Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, that's a perfect introduction into what I was thinking about saying. That is, is that the Adventist Church has a surplus property in, Adventist Church has a surplus property that they are proposing to get rid of, where, had been expecting to hear in November what their decision was going to be. It is in Tacoma Park, the John Evans Andrews School, which is expected, unless I've heard, not having heard anything to the contrary, will be closed at the end of this current school year.
It'll be July of 2017.
Oh, it's been moved back to July of 2017? Okay. But in any case, it's going to become available. It's an old building, obviously, at least obvious to those who've been in it, but it's large, large facility, huge auditorium, stage, and a lot of real estate in the back. And... And it seemed to me that ever since two, in 1997, excuse me, I'm recovering from a cold and it sounds like my transmission slips a gear every once in a while. In 1997, so I did it again on that seven, oh, when this city was unified in Montgomery County, the, the school system then had to absorb all the kids that were in that segment on the eastern side of the, of the city. And I think that that, that was what, 18 years ago, contributed to, to the, to the impact, at least back in those days, of, toward overcrowding. Because they're just, you know, all we had was the existing inventory of schools.
Right.
And I'm, I'm just sort of, I don't know how familiar you are with that background because that does go back a little ways in time. But the, the possibility of there being a facility that the school board might be interested in looking at in terms of acquisition and renovation, it would probably require a great deal of renovation. I don't even know whether it needs to be sprinkled or things like that, but that could be a, a real diamond in the rough that the school board might want to consider. I mean, it's certainly not yours to decide. At this point, it's still in the domain of the, of the Potomac Conference of the Seventh Day Adventist Church, as they weigh exactly what they want, how they want to dispose of it. But this is a possibility, and it might serve to solve an awful lot of problems in this part of Montgomery County in terms of school capacity.
Yeah, we're, we're certainly going to take a look at that. You know, we don't know when the disposition, like you said, with, with Seventh Day Adventist, but I guess the assumption is they're going to sell the property. So, and I, as I said at the beginning, the board asked us to look at, you know, what are the options for another elementary school in the lower part of the DCC? We have some other closed schools that are in board ownership. So the cost-wise, having to buy something versus use something that's already in board ownership, that would be a challenge, but, but we're open to all possibilities, and our real estate unit is, is taking a look at that building and the site.
Okay.
So, yeah, we are taking a look at it.
Oh, you, you are taking a look at it?
Yep.
Okay. Because if I can facilitate those conversations, I'm in close touch with the, the person at, in the Adventist Church who is heading that analysis.
Okay, yeah.
And I'd be delighted to be of some use to, to, to the discussion if I can.
Yeah, keep that in mind.
Thank you. Councilmember Koreshi?
Thank you, Mayor Stewart, and thank you, Mr. Crispell, for coming here today. This has been very informative. I know that we had some of your presentation materials available to us. I don't know if we have this slideshow, but if we don't, if you could provide us a copy, I think that would be great.
We do, it is on the.
Okay. I just have a, a quick question. I guess one thing I will reiterate, as somebody with a, who's a parent of a four-year-old and a 22-month-old, and I'm dealing with the reality of sending my daughter off to elementary school next year. It's a scary thought, but it's also an exciting thought, and I think what's clear in my discussions with a group of parents that I interact with as a result of my daughter's nursery school is this very real concern in this community about there not being enough capacity for our children as they continue to move through the school system, which is one of the many reasons, and one, a primary reason why my family and I relocated to this area. So, I can, I can only, I have to reiterate what Councilmember Mail has mentioned about how there is a, a bit of a feeling that we're not being placed on, on a proper sort of priority list, and I appreciate you sort of breaking down for us how these schools are prioritized in terms of where you're going to be doing this revitalization and building out. Now, I noticed when you described this earlier, you described some of the new projects as, as it pertains to the schools within our area, and you described a majority of them being in 2020, 2021, Tacoma Park Middle School, East Silver Spring, Piney Branch. And then you also described how Piney Branch is going to be on sort of the agenda for the fall. The question that I have is, is I think about my daughter, who's going into kindergarten next year, and I think in an earlier slide, you described how the majority in countywide in terms of the growth of the student population, if it's 18,700 or so from 2007 to 2015, a significant majority of those students are actually at the elementary level. Is that correct?
That's right. 13,000 roughly of that growth was at the elementary schools.
Correct. Now, my question is, at, at some point, do you make an adjustment to your priority of how you deal with schools in certain areas? Because by 2027 is when my daughter will be entering elementary school, you know? So, the increase and the focus on middle school and elementary school now, those kids, by the time you're done with your projections as it pertains to these new projects, may have graduated out and may have moved on to another building which is now overutilized or overcapacity even more. So I just was hoping you could provide us some guidance as to if there's any reprioritization based upon the demographics in, in a particular area and how the students are moving up through, through the ranks.
Okay, yeah. The, there's really two answers. The revitalization expansion projects come along based on your assessment and your score. So those don't change place much if at all. They, they are in a list, and they each come to their turn. However, on the addition side and building new schools, we basically are reprioritizing projects every year when we see the latest projections and look at the sixth year, you know, another year out every time we do that. And some movement of projects like Ashburton, we looked at the six-year forecast this fall in that school, and McCullough up in Germantown had, had grown so much, we, we realized we needed to get those two additions done sooner. So that, that was a reprioritization of the timing. Other schools come into the CIP for the first time, like these schools here, because we've seen the deficit and we know they need to be in the six-year program. So, when we're adding capacity, apart from a revX project, we are reprioritizing every year. So things can come in and things can, things can move up a certain amount. It, it takes three or four years to do a substantial addition or open a new school, so nothing really happens with, sooner than four years, I would say, just because of the whole design and construction process. But certainly, things are reevaluated each year. And, and the forecast goes out six years to 2021 this year, but there's also a 10th and a 15th year projected, kind of a long-term view. It's a little softer when you get that far out. But those forecasts, they're published in the CIP too. They go to 2025 and 2030 now, and they, they let us know if we, we are going to see more growth, is it going to go up more, is it going to plateau, is it going to go down kind of a rough direction of where things are headed long-term? And that can inform our decisions as well, how much to build.
Okay, and just one final question. Thank you, that's helpful. In the slide that we're looking at now, I see that these are completion dates for new projects and approved projects that are moving forward. Can you give us an idea of how on target these are in your experience?
Um, yeah, that's, that's a good question. We, we have had a struggle in, the funding for our CIP is dependent on the county council. The superintendent this year went up to a total of 1.73 billion, well, the board did. Superintendent was almost at that level, the board added a little bit more. But we've, we've had tough years, really since the Great Recession hit, where the county revenue and the state ability to fund us as well has just not, they just haven't had enough revenue. You know, we have this thing called Spending Affordability Guidelines that the county sets. You know, they're concerned about maintaining a triple-A bond rating when they borrow money, and so, and they, and they have other agencies in this county that needs things, the transportation system, you know, parks, libraries. So, factoring all those needs in, you never know for sure if what the board requested is, is going to make it all the way down the road. But I would say, within a year or two at the most, things may get pushed out a year. And in many years, it's been our revX projects that have taken the biggest hit because it's a big bucket of cost right there. They've been delayed over and over again. In fact, the superintendent this year said, I, I don't want any more delays in revX as a way to get our numbers, you know, into a reasonable total. So he was firm on maintaining the schedule they've had. So we'll, we'll see. If the money's there and the, and the council can fund it, I would hope all these come on the schedule that you see here. But I can't guarantee it till the council acts in May.
Thank you.
All right. I just have a couple of questions. If we could go back to Piney Branch for a moment, as you mentioned, there are a number of residents who are particularly concerned about the feasibility study there and the future of the pool. And if you could expand a little bit more on what the feasibility study is going to look like, because I know we have a number of residents who are here and who are watching this evening, who that's their big question, because many people were surprised when the CIP report came out in October, how the only option at that point was to get rid of the pool. And so, if you could just tell us a little bit more of how that feasibility study is going to go forward, and at what points residents and our city council can have input.
Yeah, I, I think I'll have Seth to kind of go through that. Division Construction manages the facility feasibility study process, but, but I can tell you that initially, you're right, the, we assumed that the pool would have to go, and we're not sure it can stay, but superintendent made the point during the board discussion of all this that let's try to see if there's a way to add on and preserve the pool. So, it'll go on those two tracks. Now, the, the process for feasibility studies, do you want to just kind of go over what, how people get engaged in that, Seth? And how we notify folks and all that?
So, so a feasibility study process does, you know, begin as a public opportunity for input. We work with Bruce's group from the construction side. We, we work to bring on architectural design folks. Basically, what happens is Bruce's folks will give us a, what they call an educational specification, which says, here's the number of classrooms, here's the number of support spaces that we need to try to accommodate as part of an addition process. And as we go through the public process, we really look at it from almost what we call a charrette process, which we look at all sorts of different opportunities. So we will be reaching out to different agencies, whether that's Park, Park and Planning, Parks Department. We'll be looking with, working with transportation folks to see what opportunities exist. But as we go through that process, we obviously have much opportunity for input from, from residents, from parents as we're going through. I guess, I think a big part of the feasibility process is also, you know, how do you, do you build an addition project? You know, majority of our addition projects are occupied, or the, the buildings are occupied during the addition process. So, we've really had to look at it from a, from a, preserving the educational opportunities during that process, so from a constructibility, from a disruption standpoint. So, you know, we will be working with, obviously, all the, all the folks that are, that are involved in the process, but we will be, obviously, weighing what the pros and cons are as we're moving forward from, from a feasibility perspective.
Councilmember Kovar, did you have something on that point?
Yes, just another vote in favor of looking at the space behind the school, because I think right now, and I think Councilmember Mail was talking about, that's kind of wasted space between the field and the school. And there's a strip there that's a lot larger, if it runs the whole length of the school, than you'd ever get by raising the pool. So I just think, I want to underline what they both said about taking a really serious look at that as an alternative for where the extra space could potentially be found.
Great. Let's see, I had a couple of other questions. I think as, I'll just say it as a mother of someone in a high school, as you look at Blair, I'm sure you'll do this, but the idea that you're going to have 3,400 students there, when my daughter almost eats lunch every day sitting on the floor, is kind of horrific. So I just needed to put that out there, because I just can't imagine what that's going to look like in terms of just how they're all eating lunch.
Right.
Because right now, it's horrific.
Yep.
And the, the final thing for tonight, just because we have you here, and this may not be your department either, but I hear a great deal from parents at Piney Branch who would very much, if we ever do actually get winter this year, would like to know who to contact to get the area cleared in the back so that the children can go out for recess. We've experienced issues over the past few years where, because of snow and ice, they can't go out for recess. We don't need to get into a whole conversation about recess, but it's very important, and they've just been frustrated to whom they can contact about that issue.
Well, the, for the principals should be contacted, I mean, should this, through their school plan operations staff, they, they should work that out with, with their staff there. I'm surprised they haven't been able to get the playground cleared in the past.
I think it's the steps, right?
Yeah, it's the steps.
The steps to go up through that moat area and up to the field.
Well, I can talk to the director of school plan operations.
That would be terrific.
And let her know that's been an issue. It's the steps, not the, not the blacktop?
I think it's mostly the steps, but we can get you more information about that.
Okay, you know, if Susan could email me.
Just because you're here tonight.
Yeah, sure. Anything else I could do for you?
Okay. Oh, we have one more question. Councilmember Kovar? Oh, is that an old light? Is it an old light? Is that everyone? I think that is it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate it. Do you have a question?
What's next on this subject?
What is next? What would you, what would you propose, Councilmember?
Well, I'm just hoping we would use this moment with the council paying attention to schools to talk about some next steps. And so just to put some ideas out there, one of the simplest is for a council to do a resolution or a letter to the county executive and the county council, supporting the improvements already in the CIP. For that matter, we could support improvements that are not CIP-related. We could support other investments in schools and programming, in the shoveling budget, whatever it might be. So that's a specific thing. I would also urge us to ask for some specific follow-up about our schools. So if we were able to, to provide a query back to the, the school's system or the Board of Education, whichever one, and ask specifically about the schools that we care most about and, and issues there. The other thing I'd be interested in is sort of my colleagues' views on, on having a process so that in future years, and this was, I think, partly affected by the timing of our election this year and this being a somewhat new issue, but in future years, you heard our speaker tonight talk about the fact that the Board of Education has already voted and made amendments to the CIP, so that's gone to the county council. So our opportunity to engage at this point is at the, at the county council level, at the state level, because the state provides a really important funding for a lot of this work. But we've missed that window to influence the, the Board of Education, or in fact, the CIP itself. So, the other, another idea for future engagement is in September, or indeed in summer, before our summer recess, so July or June, to have a council session where we focus on trying to get ideas for CIP-related improvements into, into the budget, into its first iteration, right? The best thing is always to be there in the very first draft, then you get taken out maybe, but at least you're, you're there at that time. And the one last thing I would ask for is whether we could have some city staff time to look at and provide summary data for the council and the community on the kinds of investments we've seen in the city, in the, in the schools that city residents depend on over, let's say, like a 20-year period. And so that question I asked about when have schools last been modernized in Tacoma Park, and the answer for two of our elementary schools was never. Another answer was 1988. You know, people talk about 21st century schools, right? And, and, and that's what you get when you do a modernization. When you add a classroom on to schools, as Tacoma Park Elementary School did, you get a couple of more concrete block structures that are added to the existing concrete block structure. And so, for example, having city staff look at some of the data on modernization, school age, roof age, because they've, we've so far not gotten any solar roofs in city schools because, because the roofs are too old to put solar panels on. So if the city staff could, or if my, the council, my colleagues support that, trying to pull together some more of the data that the county doesn't necessarily have a strong incentive to do.
If I, if I could, every year when the draft CIP comes out for the schools, I look through it actually quite closely. And one of the things that, I guess one of the features has been that they've hardly talked about Tacoma Park schools, as you, as you mentioned. And so, it certainly is something that we should share, that gee, there's nothing in here. But I think it, you know, I had to step out for the Safe Road Race Committee briefly, but. but the overcrowding in the schools here, I think, caught the school district by surprise. And so, you know, it wasn't in their, it wasn't in their CIP documents in previous years. These cover six years. It's not like it's a quick turnaround, and so you would have thought that there would have been some hints, and there were not. So it is something to report back on a regular basis, but it is something also that I've looked at and not seen any thing that seemed to be a particular issue, one way or the other, I think simply because they didn't have this data.
The one, again, the one other stat that could be useful is looking at success and prediction, right? So I mentioned briefly that looking at a couple of old CIPs and then comparing them to what actually happened, in six out of seven of our schools, the county repeatedly underestimated enrollment, year after year, CIP after CIP. So having gotten it wrong once, having gotten it wrong twice, having gotten it wrong three times, nothing changed. So that's why it would show up or not show up, is because something about the formula is not looking at, is not correcting itself.
Right. I think that's valid. One of the things that's, I think, interesting about Tacoma Park is that if you compare us to Gaithersburg and some of the other places, there's huge new subdivisions going in. So they're focused on, and they can count up how many new houses, that kind of thing. What we have had is a resettling of our homes here with people with children. And so it, you know, it wasn't as obvious in the things that tend to trigger, I think, oh, there's gonna, there's a new subdivision going in, so we need to look at capacity, we need to look at those issues. And so your point's well taken, but, and I think it's just kind of a sense that families prefer to live closer in to the urban area now than they used to. And so it's a new phase that I don't see going away.
I would like to mention that the Board of Ed is having hearings on January 7th and January 14th. So it's, and sign up started today, December 14th. So, and then the county council meetings on this will be in the spring. But just taking, picking up on what you said, Councilmember Mail, you know, we can't wait. And I would even urge people, and we can think about if there are members of our council who'd like to testify, that we start doing it immediately.
Well, we certainly can have a generic letter, I think, going forward about, you know, areas of concern.
Let's see, I had a couple of lights. Councilmember Schultz?
You know, I'm coming away with a clear impression, listening to the presentation tonight and Councilmember Mail's comments and previous comments, is that we've sort of been on the short end of the stick. And I wish I could say that it was limited just to school capacity, but we know that sometimes we also feel like we're on the short end of the stick with some other issues as well. But I won't go there. Your comments about the changing demographics, Ms. Ludlow, are right, you know, are absolutely correct. And I think it points to the fact that the city, that the county is using the wrong algorithm or a formula, or whatever big word you want to use for that, is that they're not taking into account the, I guess, I'm not sure, the word, or the revitalization of an older city like Tacoma Park with younger people, bringing children into the school system. Those who live here have, it's not a surprise to any of us. We look out our front door, and we can see the bus stops have been filling up, school bus stops for years, over the last 20, 25 years. It's just been, it's just very, very obvious. So when I look at the proposed, that the various proposed improvements aren't going to be realized until 2020 or 2021, five, you know, five, five to six years out, even if they go, if they stay on schedule, let's hope, that seems an awful long time to have to wait for situations that are overcrowded. Now, I'm not naive. I know that we can't turn the CIP around overnight. He said it takes three or four years. But I do really think if we, we should have a resolution, and I think that resolution ought to be a little bit on the pointed side, that maybe some of these things need to be moved up a year or two on the CIP, and just, and just sort of give a push. I mean, one of the things that disappoints me is that we have a school board member who's served on the school board probably longer than almost anybody, and Chris Barkley, who's lived in Tacoma Park for many years, and that that aspect of things hasn't been taken into account by the school board member who lives here in our city, at least, at least not from my observation. And maybe he's been fighting tooth and nail for this and just has always been on the losing end. I don't know. But we do have representation from somebody who lives in the city, who's done a good job over the years and is well-respected. And I just wish we'd had better representation when it comes to this capacity problem. And so we sit here, and all of a sudden, from the city, county's point of view, it's sort of like, oh, my gosh, all of a sudden, we've got over enrollment, over and under capacity here, as though it just miraculously appeared. Well, it hasn't just miraculously appeared, it's been around for a long time. And the situation that Tim was describing, enrolling terrorists, and that we heard earlier tonight, gosh, that's just unacceptable.
Councilmember Kovar?
Just one quick point, I'd like to see if what... I kind of got the impression that Councilmember Mail and Councilmember Schultz are hinting at, can we look at whether schools that aren't necessarily higher income, or that have a higher rate of farms, are enduring more overcrowding and longer times to fix it? Because that's true. I don't know if you were specifically suggesting that or hitting at that, but if that's true, that would be a very troubling thing. And it may just be coincidental, or as Fred says, in other ways, we get the short end of things possibly, but I think it would be really important to understand that. Or school systems where there's a higher immigrant community, or something along those lines. And I don't expect anyone to know the statistics off the top of their head, but I just think we should look at that.
The statistics are available, so we can share those. I think, you know, one of the biggest differences is that many of the communities across Montgomery County are just booming. Lots of, lots of new housing, lots of new apartments, a lot of the kids are farms kids. It's not like it's, you know, wealthy, you know, wealthy homes in that respect. I think that one of the things that's difficult here is that our property sizes, the lot sizes are small. And so it's, we're not able to easily accommodate portables to kind of go over the humps of in and out of the years. We have to talk about building changes, and that makes it really tough. So I think, you know, some of the further out areas, they do have bigger sizes, acreage for their schools. And so I think that's eased the issue, but it's worth looking at the difference on...
You know, I think I would just say, my daughter graduated from Blair, and I guess it was probably 2007, when she started there, there was 3,500 students there. And by the end, they quote unquote fixed it, because Northwood opened, and we sort of cycled back into that again. So I don't know if that means when they do the analysis of all the down county schools, if that means another high school should be open. But they mentioned over 1,000 new students in all five of those schools. So historically, that's what happened.
Councilmember Mail?
Yes, to just to summarize, it sounds like the city staff are able to pull together some of the, some of the data, and maybe we could work together to talk about what the, some of the things that I think would be of interest and share those backwards with the council.
And then we can share by email.
Great. And then there was support for...
Yeah, I was gonna do that.
Okay. I'll use. I didn't, I realize I didn't.
That's okay.
I wanted to make a motion, and I realize I didn't make a motion.
Okay.
And I like it better when we make motions and then...
Oh, okay. All right. Would you like to, would you like to make an actual motion?
No, 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 go for it.
All right. So I think there were a couple of things that were put on the table. As Councilmember Mail just said, we were talking about having the city staff look up a number of things to get back to us, and Councilmember Kovar mentioned that as well. Given that we are about to go into recess until mid-January, and there are these Board of Ed hearings coming up, one of the things I was gonna just put out there and suggest is that if we do have some of that information, and if we, people want to do this via email, and it looks like we're coming to a group of us moving forward, that a letter could be put in, in January preceding a resolution. And that we can work on a resolution when we come back in January. Does that sound...
Are we gonna take a vote, or are we just gonna...
I was gonna just do a hand, a straw vote, if that's okay, at this point, since we're about to go on recess.
Mayor Stewart, if I may ask a question. Did you say the Board of Education hearings are January 7th and 14th?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think the sign up started today. So, does the manager have anything to add to that? Or, so just to show a hand, just to do a straw vote, taking that as a general direction as we go on recess, does that work for folks?
Yeah.
I have one, two, four, five. Is that it? Oh, Shruti, okay.
Sorry, but I believe the hearings were presented from January, I thought, they were not presented...
Thank you. That's very helpful.
They're going to be council hearings, yes.
There'll be county council.
We'll get information out on the different hearing dates.
Thank you for that clarification. That's very helpful. Great. All right. So staff is gonna provide us some information back, and then we can look at that via email and decide whether or not it makes sense to move forward the letter while we're on recess, or just take this up again in a resolution in January. That work for everyone?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. The final item is the city council is scheduled to go, to vote to go into closed session to consult with legal counsel regarding Washington Adventist Hospital's petition to relocate and to discuss pending or potential litigation, including administrative proceedings before the Maryland Healthcare Commission pursuant to annotated code of the Maryland General Provisions Article 3-305B7 and 3-305B8. The council will not convene in public session after the closed session. Would someone please like to move us to go into closed session?
I'll move it.
Councilmember Schultz, a second?
Second.
Councilmember Mail, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will move into closed session then. Thank you. We'll see you in January.